Since he finds us in such a way that he wants us to begin to walk and to live and to become and to be everything God has destined us to be, but I need you to understand, you need somebody. Now, I need us to go, I need to go here to, to remind us that we as the children of God, we are kingdom people. Let me re-say that again. We are kingdom people. Somebody put king, kingdom, kingdom. Trying to see, y'all stay with me. I'm almost done. Y'all stay with me. Kingdom, kingdom. We are kingdom people. Now, I need to say this because for many of us, when you hear kingdom, you only think of, of a biblical word. When you hear kingdom, you say, oh, that's a Bible word. And, and it don't mean anything to you. So let me help us to understand something. Let me help you understand that kingdom is very important for the life of a believer. Because God want us to understand that we are kingdom people. Now, now, let me tell you why it doesn't mean much to you, because we live in the democracy. And because we live in the democracy, we don't understand kingdom culture. You know, because we live in a democracy in, in America, it's all about what the people want. That's why every so often they let us vote, because they let us know who we want our officials to be. Who we want our mayor and our governor and our president to be, because we are a democracy and it's about what the people want. Yeah, that's why, but when the Bible talks about a kingdom, it's talking about a culture. And the kingdom, God, God wants us to understand that the, that God's people, he's looking for us to be kingdom people. Because the kingdom does, it does not operate like a democracy. A kingdom does not have a president, it has a king, which suggests it's not what the people want, it was the king want. It has nothing to do with your opinions and what you think about. Therefore, when a king says out a decree, that's why the own, the, oh, the king cannot go back on his word. Because whatever the king says, go, and he doesn't go back on the word. No one of the Bible says that God is not a man that he shall lie. Neither is he the son of man that he should repent, because what, because of when he says something, God will never go retract on his word. Now, with that being the case, since we are kingdom people, and since God want us to operate under the, uh, in the kingdom, he wants the rule and the reign of God to operate in our lives. Now, I need you to understand something. This is good to me. God has always wanted the earth to resemble the kingdom of God. God has always want, see, I want you to know, this idea of kingdom, this kingdom culture is not foreign to the scriptures. God has always wanted the kingdom to be impacted in such a way that the earth and the, and heaven resemble one another. In other words, God want the kingdom to impact earth in such a way. If I had time tonight, I would tell you, God already had a, 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 a heavenly family. If I had time to deal with, I ain't got damn my subject tonight, but I would tell you that God already had a heavenly family. So what God decides he's gonna do, he's gonna have an earthly family. So he created the earth and he put Adam there, who I, who I called the first king on earth, God's crown creation, and he put him in the garden of Eden. Now, I need you to understand something. Eden, it was supposed to resemble the kingdom of God, heaven. And so God says, Adam, since you are the first king on earth, you are to subdue the land. Amen. He told Adam, he, you should have dominion, that's kingdom language, over the fish of the sea, over the bear, uh, the, of the files of the air, and every creepy thing that creeped upon the earth. What are you doing, God? I want you to resemble on earth what I do in heaven, my God. And so the Bible says that God gave him so much power. God says that whatever you name the animal, that's what it's gonna be called. When he heard the dog say bow wow, he says, you gonna be a dog. When he heard the cat say meow, he says, you gonna be a cat. When, when he heard the, the cat say moo, he says, you gonna be a cow, amen, because I'm not, in other words, God says, I'm not gonna name the animals. I want to, you to resemble what I do in heaven. So whatever you name, it's gonna be called that. Y'all missing it. See, God always wanted the kingdom to be influenced on the earth. But somewhere, somehow, when the natash, that is the serpent, where he tricked Adam and, uh, Eve rather, and, 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 and Adam went through with that, when he did that, they, uh, God kicked them out of the garden of Eden. And all the whole time, what God has been trying to do, he's still been trying to impact earth by the kingdom. Oh, I know that's the case, because that's why Jesus had to come. That's why the Bible said he's the second Adam. So what Jesus does, he comes, become the second Adam. And he says, I'm gonna die on a cross, and when folk obey me and obey the gospel of Jesus Christ, when that happens, they are submitting to my rule and my reign. Y'all don't see that? So what I'm doing is, I'm going to impact earth by heaven, amen. That's why the church is not the kingdom, but the church is the expansion of the kingdom. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come on earth. What is in heaven, what are you doing? I'm trying to impact the earth by through heaven. Now, watch this. Since that's true, God, when I really allow you to be the ruler and reign over my life, detox becomes easier, because it's no longer what I want is what you want. It's no longer what I see is what you see. I have no problem submitting to your authority, because God, you are the ruler and the reign over my life. Now, wait a minute. If, if that be true, if God begins to rule over your life individually, and you begin to get other folk to fall in love with Jesus, and now your husband and your wife, now they begin, they become a part of the kingdom, and now your children are being influenced by you, they fell in love with Jesus, they are part of he, now you got a kingdom family. Y'all don't see that? See, 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 what God is interested in, he's interested in us operating through kingdom. He's interested in us operate in such a way through kingdom that we share with the world that who's the ruler and the reign over my life. Jesus ain't your Lord just because you say it with your mouth. Jesus is your Lord when you operating your actions and your thinking, and you show the world that although this may not be what I wanna do, I don't have authority over myself. I'm submitting myself to the kingdom. Now, watch this, I need you to see it. That's why it's necessary, the community of believers, the church of my Lord, that's why it's so important. That's why you can't be church homeless. That's why you need a body of believers. Because God has made it such a way that we are dependent upon each other. That's why I need you tonight. You need me tonight. And I need you to understand something. Here is our struggle and why we can't detox properly. Y'all wait for it. The reason we can't detox properly is because we want kingdom power, but we don't wanna follow kingdom principles. We want the power that comes from the kingdom, but we don't wanna follow its principle, kingdom principle. I know I'm telling the truth tonight, that, that there are many believers tonight who want the power of the kingdom. You wanna be able to pray in a movement. You won't be able, you wanna be able to walk in a space and be able to have your head up and say, I am a child of God, and everything just shift because you are a child of God. See, the problem is that the reason we're so sick, we want to treat God like a sugar daddy, and we want his power, but we don't wanna follow his principles. But let me help you understand tonight, that if we are really going to detox properly, you cannot have his power and not follow the principle. So tonight, what I wanna share with us and why we need each other, and I'm gonna show, I'm trying to show you a big principle here. The principle is, I need you. Stop saying you don't need nobody. Stop telling yourself, I don't need nobody but God. That's a lie. There ain't no word in scripture. Stop singing that song. All I need is King Jesus. I don't need no, that ain't, you can sing a lot, tell a lot, just like you can sing a lot, amen. Here, I want you to understand something. We all need somebody. We need somebody. Bless the name of Jesus. We need somebody. I need you and you need me, the songwriter. We all are part of God's family. And so because of that, many of us are restricted and we stay sick, because we don't realize how much we need each other. We don't realize. Now, listen, the church is a spiritual hospital. Everybody on here right now got issues, got struggles, got fingers, got habits. And if the church is a spiritual hospital, why we surprised when sick people show up? Oh, Lord, if, if we are a spiritual hospital, why you so shocked when sick folks show up to the hospital? That's where they supposed to be, because we need each other in order to detox properly. Now, let me show you a few things, some principles. I, I get to my big point, but let me show you some principles presented to the kingdom. Because you want the power, but you need principles. You can't have the power without following the principles of the kingdom. Watch this. Principle number one, knowledge is the seed to change. Somebody write, write that down. Knowledge is the seed to change. That's a kingdom principle. Now, I want you to know, these principles I'm giving you tonight, I'm, I'm, I'm almost done. These principles I'm giving you tonight, I want you to know, if we follow these principles, I promise you, your life will change. Please take notes tonight. Please write it down tonight. You ain't gotta be the same. Listen, I promise you, these are principles that I, took me some time to learn from my own life. Amen. It took me some time. I'm thirty-six years old, but it took me some time to learn. And I'm just giving you some principles that I've learned to help me to become what God need me to be and to mature me, amen. It didn't happen overnight. It was intentional, because I recognize I can't do this by myself. So I want you to know, the principle number one, knowledge is the seed to change. You cannot change ba, uh, uh, above what you know. Lord have mercy. You can't change above your revelation. You cannot have the same stinking thinking and then thinking the same way year after year, month after month, and day after day, and think you gonna change. No. Knowledge is the seed to change. If your life is not different this year, my question is, what you been thinking about? Cause knowledge, how have you been feeding yourself? Because whatever you don't feed properly will die. If you do not feed the physical body, it will die. It will shut down. If you do not feed the spiritual man, it will die. So watch this. Knowledge is the seed to change. If you wanna change, you gotta change what you know. Oh, my God. Somebody say, change what you know. Change what you know. Uh, uh, you gotta, you gotta change. This is a principle. Listen to what I, if you wanna change, the seed, knowledge is the seed to change. Well, watch this. Number two, principle number two, listening is the seed to learning. Okay, y'all missed it. Y'all missed it. Knowledge is the seed to change, but listening is the seed to learning. Say it one more time for those who didn't hear, who cooking, putting your ingredients right now. Let me say it one more time. Listening is the seed to learning. You can't learn talking too much. You talk too much, so you cannot, you cannot learn because you ain't listening. Most, most conflict happens between two individuals, because folk ain't listening. They're trying to respond, but they ain't listening. Listening is the seed to learning, my God. No one of James, the half-brother of Jesus, says, be quick to listen and slow to speak. Grandma was saying like this, you got one mouth and two ears for a reason. Anybody got a grandma like mine? In other words, you gotta learn to listen. Listening is the seed to learning. If you just sit down somewhere and listen, you will learn something. But you cannot know everything and expect to learn, bless the name of Jesus. And I want us to understand, this principle of the kingdom suggests that if you want the power, listen to the principle. Listening is the seed of learning. Watch this. Not only is knowledge the seed to change, not only is listening to the seed of learning, but thirdly, God's word is the seed to territory. Lord, I know I'm a witness to this. God's word is the seed to territory. In other words, if you want territory, if you want God to enlarge your territory, if you want God to do so, if you wanna be successful in life, I mean, true, true success. I'm talking about success where you ain't gotta be worrying, tossing and turning, cause you know, a lot of folk got a lot of money, a lot of folk got a lot of stuff in the bank, but they worried about trying to keep it. They, 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 they spend so much time trying to make a living, they ain't got time to live. That ain't being successful. I'm talking about when you are really successful, God's word is the seed to territory. I know that's the case. No wonder he says, seek first the kingdom of God, and all his righteousness and all these things shall be added unto you. What's the thing? Food, clothing, and shelter. Those are the things. See, the problem is, we seek the food, clothing, and things, and we don't seek the kingdom, because we want power, but we don't want principle. But I wanna tell you tonight, from the word of God, that I'm here to declare, listen to me closely, lean in, child of God, God's word is the seed of terr- of, of territory. If you want your, your territory to be enlarged, I double dog dare you tonight, get in God's word. I double it up. Watch, watch what God tells Joshua when Moses died. In Joshua chapter one, verse number eighty-nine, watch what the Bible says. Joshua one, verse eighty-nine. Long ago, I promised the ancestors of Israel that I would give this land to their descendants, so be strong, watch this, and brave. Be careful to do everything my servant Moses taught you. Watch this. Never stop reading the book of the law he gave you. Do y'all see that? That's his word. Don't stop reading it. Day and night, you must think about what it said. That's our struggle. You become, listen, you are in a storm right now. You in a valley right now. You need to detox right now, but you don't know what is worth saving. You keep saying, God, I need this thing, and God, I need that thing. God is constantly trying to tell you, watch the principle. My word is the seed to territory. My word is the seed to success, and I need you to stop just to ask, what did I say about? So you ain't gotta struggle the way you struggle, if you just say, God, what did you say about this? God, I'm, I, I got some struggles in my marriage, and, 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 and it's really, it's real difficult, but well, God, what did God say about it? I got some struggles on my job, and folk don't like me, and I don't know where I'm gonna do. What did God say about it? God, I, I don't want this promotion, and I'm thinking about, should I have it, or should I apply for it? What, what is God telling you from his word? Our biggest struggle is, we don't know the word. Watch what he says. He says, day and night, you must think about what it says. Watch what he said. If you obey it completely, watch this, you and Israel will be able to take this land. In other words, I will enlarge your territory. Other translation says, I will make your way prosperous, and then you will have good success. I know you reading a lot of books, ain't no wrong with that about how to be successful, but God already told you, Joshua one and eighty-nine, what to do, if you just get in the word, meditate on this word. Let God to feed you and talk to you and lead you. He tells you, I'll make your way prosperous, and I will enlarge your territory. Watch what it says. Don't ever be afraid or discouraged. Oh, I can lay it right there. See, somebody right here tonight, you been discouraged all day long. You was discouraged yesterday, you discouraged last month. You saying, God, how I'm gonna make it? But watch what he tells Joshua. Don't ever be afraid or discouraged. Why? Cause I am the Lord, your God. I'm Yahweh God, and I will be there to help you wherever you go. I'm not suggesting that you ain't gonna be in the valley, but I'll be there to help you. I'm not suggesting that you won't ever have some hurtful nights, but I'll be there to help you. I'm not suggesting to you that folk won't lead you and family won't walk away. I'm not suggesting any of that. But even if all of that happens, you can be encouraged tonight, because God says, I'm gonna be there, which. He said, principle we need to learn. God's word is the seed to territory. So watch the principles tonight. Watch the principles. The kingdom principle, cause what we have to, we need each other, right? Gotta follow kingdom principles, because we can't just have power without principle. Principle one, knowledge is the seed to change. Principle two, listen, uh, listening is the seed of learning. Principle three, God's word is the seed to territory. Now, I said all that tonight, just to get to this one point. I said all that to get to this one principle. If I had to go through all that to get to this one principle. This last principle is where I wanna land. This last principle is, honor is the seed to access. Oh, Lord. Y'all need to write that down. Honor is the seed to access. That's a principle. Giving you these kingdom principles. Let's remember, we're kingdom people. And since we're kingdom people looking for kingdom power, we gotta follow kingdom principles. Kingdom principle says, honor is the seed to access. What do you mean, preacher? Meaning, I need you and you need me. But we live in a culture in America where we do more dishonor, we dishonor each other, rather than honor each other. Lord have mercy. In the kingdom of God, if we ever learn this principle, honor is the seed of access, God will blow your mind. See, you gotta learn how to honor other people and respect other people. You gotta learn to honor and respect people that you don't necessarily agree with about everything, but you better learn something about honoring them, because when you are part of the kingdom of God, you honor, and honor is the seed to access, amen. And so you don't even realize that God may use that individual with the very thing that you need. You need access to their resources, but you can't get access to it, because you so disrespectful. You so mean and hateful. And God says, I gave you your blessing and your prayer request three weeks ago, but you keep walking behind the blessing and walking in front of the blessing. And I'm telling you, all you had to do was follow this kingdom principle and honor people. We, it, 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 it does us an injustice when God's people disrespect other people. I don't care what, what the education level is. I don't care what, what tide they have or don't have. God's people should never be a people who disrespect other people. Because in the kingdom of God, in the kingdom of my Lord, everybody in the kingdom has something for the kingdom. There is nobody is a part of the kingdom of God, that God has not given you something to give to the kingdom of God, to bless the kingdom of God. Lord have mercy. In other words, stop saying you don't know your purpose, or you don't have a purpose, rather. You may not know it, but you got one. Yeah, yeah. Everybody in the kingdom of God has something. Now, I, now, this is what, this will bless me in my study. I need you. You need me. Watch this. Because when God show up, God doesn't always show up looking like God. Oh, y'all will miss it tonight. You're gonna miss your shout. See, see, I need you. I want you to know, when God shows up, this is what, this is what messed me up. When God shows up, y'all, God doesn't always show up looking like God. Okay, okay. See, when God shows up, you ain't gonna know it's God oftentimes, because you thinking, you looking for God to come in a particular box, in a particular image. But I want you to know tonight, God will show up, and God won't always look like God when he show up. Do you remember, do you remember when they was, when they was in that storm, the disciples? And it was the fourth watch of the night, the fourth watch of the night is the darkest night. Bless the name of Jesus. It's, it's the darkest night. And, 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 and the darkest night, from three to six, three AM to six AM, the darkest night, they saw something walking on the wall, and one of the disciples said, it's a ghost, but it was Jesus. Okay, y'all missed it. They, 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 that was, it was the darkest night of the night. They see something walking on water, and they say, it's a ghost. But it wasn't a ghost, y'all. It was Jesus. Third time's the charm. They, they, they in a storm. They tired. They sleepy. They been toiling all night. And they look and see something walking, and they say it's a ghost, but it's really Jesus. Can I tell you, sometimes it's hard to identify God in a storm. And what you think may be there to, to frighten you, may be there to free you, bless the name of Jesus. In other words, when God shows up, God doesn't always come looking like God. Let me show you this tonight. Let me show you this principle. Honor is the seed of access. Somebody say access. Somebody said, don't miss this principle tonight. Tonight, you cannot miss this principle. Because if you miss this principle, you as an individual, you will stay stuck and sick and not be released when you really need to detox and start inviting people in your life. See, I know, I know the rea, the only reason you don't want folks in your life, because you've been hurt. Because folks will misuse you, right? But I want you to know that there are boundaries that have to be set, but you gotta at least honor people. When you honor people, it give you access. It give you access to resources that you never know, that you maybe know, have never thought about. I wanna show you this principle. Watch this. Look at Proverbs, Proverbs chapter eighteen. Proverbs eighteen. I'm almost done. Proverbs eighteen, verse sixteen, very familiar passages of scripture, uh, from the New King James, I'm gonna read it from there first. Proverbs chapter eighteen, verse sixteen. Watch this. A man's gift makes room for him. Watch this. And bring him before great men. Anybody read that before? Y'all read that? Just give me some emojis. Y'all read that before. A man's gift makes room for him and brings him before great men. You didn't, you didn't read that before. You didn't, you didn't even heard preachers preaching. You didn't hear preachers who would get up and try to encourage you to use your gift, and they'll say, use your gift for the Lord. Don't get discouraged by using your gift, because your gift gonna make room for you, right? It's gonna bring you before great men. Yo, if you, if you can, if you can preach, preach like, you may not can preach like Paul, but preaching, nobody said, your gift gonna make room. You can sing, sing, uh, uh, can't sing like Sally, but just sing, and your gift will make room for you. Now, I love all of it and everything, but let me tell you, that ain't what the scripture is talking about. Oh, we, I, I'm, I'm sorry to say, I'm shy, I'm sorry to tell you tonight, but that scripture ain't talking about your gift and meaning your ability that what God has given you gonna make. That ain't what he talking about. Uh, let me read it from a better translation to help you to understand. Look at Proverbs eighteen sixteen from the New Living. Let's put it in context. Watch what it says. Giving a gift can open doors. It gives access to important people. Oh, my God. What, what are you saying? Giving gift, giving a gift can open doors. It gives access to important people. Say it one more time, preacher. Giving a gift can open door. It gives access to important people. So wait a minute. The gift he's talking about ain't talking about your ability. The gift he's talking about is talking about a present, because in the ancient times, whenever men wanted to see kings, they had to present a gift, because the gift would give them access to important men. So the gift will open up doors for them, so they can have access to people with resources that they never had. Oh, I know I miss you. I don't mean to bother your theology tonight, but I want you to know that the gift that he's talking about, he's talking about a present. It will, he said, it will open up doors. It gives, it gives you access to important people, which lies the principle. Honor is the seed to success. Honesty. So watch this. What are you saying? I'm saying, you gotta learn how to honor people. You gotta learn how to respect people, because you never know the resources that they have that can bless your life and to help you while you try to come out this deep, while you're detoxing. You never know. So you gotta be careful of who you don't think they can bless you. Just because they look a certain way and they act a certain way, and amen, but you don't know what, what God has given them, the resources that will bless your life. That's why you gotta receive them, and you gotta stop acting like you don't need nobody. That's why you still sick. He says, giving a gift can open up doors. It gives access to important people. Now, I want, I wanted to show you this, this principle in the, in the Old Testament. Watch First Kings. Go to First Kings, chapter ten. First Kings, chapter ten, verses one through ten. I want you to see this. First Kings, chapter ten. We're gonna read verse one through ten from the New Living translation. Watch what the Bible says. The Bible says, when the queen of Sheba heard of Solomon's fame, which brought honor to the name of the Lord, she came to test him with hard questions. She arrived in Jerusalem with a large group of attendees and a great cameras of, of, of camels loaded, watch this, with spices, large quantities of gold, and precious jewel. What is she's doing? She's bearing gifts. She's bearing gifts. Queen Sheba is bearing gifts because she knows her gift will make room for. If she honored the king, he will give her access to resources that she don't, okay, okay. No wonder when, when baby Jesus was born, the three, the, the wise man brought three gifts. And when, and when they came, they buried gifts because they knew this principle of gift will give you access to certain people. Watch the text. The text says, when she met Solomon, she talked with him about everything she had on her mind. Solomon had answers for all her questions, nothing was too hard for, for the king to explain to her. Watch this. When the queen of Sheba realized how very wise Solomon was and when she saw the palace he had built, she was overwhelmed. Watch this. She was also amazed at the food on his table, the organization of his officials and the splendid clothing, the cup barrier and the burnt offerings Solomon made at the temple of the Lord. She exclaimed to the king, everything, watch this. I heard in my country about your achievements and willstom. It's true, I didn't believe what was said until I arrived here and I saw it with my own eyes. In fact, I had not heard of it. Your willstom and prosper- prosperity are far beyond what I was told. How happy your people must be. Watch this. What a privilege for your officials to stand here today after day and listen to your willstom. Praise the Lord, your God who delights in you and has placed you on the throne of Israel. Because of the Lord's eternal love for Israel. Watch this. He has made you king so you can rule with justice and right. Wait for it. Then she gave the king a gift of nine thousand pounds of gold, great quantities of spices and precious jewels. Never again where she sold so many spices brought in those, the queen of Sheba gave to Solomon. Wait a minute. Her gift is making room for. Because she knew something about honor. She knew honor, something about honoring the gift, honoring the king and people in such a way they give her resources. Listen tonight, my question to you, have you dishonored the wrong people? See, see, you've been praying about God doing some stuff and God broke, broke the resources right to you, but you so disrespectful to them that you don't even have what they can offer you. And God says, sometimes when God show up, I don't always show up looking like myself. Oh, I hope I'm helping somebody tonight. I'm trying to help somebody with relationships. Trying to help some husbands and some wives that y'all so familiar with each other, you don't even recognize the resources y'all have with these. I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to help some parents even with some children. Because just because they child, they're your child, they got some, they got some stuff within them that they can share with you. But because of who they are, because of their age, you feel like they can't offer you anything. Oh my, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to really help us tonight to understand from the word of God, we gotta learn to honor. Have you never, have you ever noticed in the scripture, the Bible never says, honor your parents? Never say that. It said, honor your mother and father. Because a parent, it may be the role you have, it's the role. But when the Bible talks about mother and father, that means you're a life giver. So you're honoring mother and father because they are a life giver. And if they, if they, if they never, uh, was one with each other, you never would have been here. So although they had mistake, they made their mistakes, although they probably wasn't the best mother in the world, the best father in the world, the scriptures still teach us to honor that father and that mother that that may live long on the earth. Y'all say amen when you can. In other words, mother and fathers are life givers. No wonder we honor, whatever that's a life giver, that's what you ought to give honor to. No wonder we honor Jehovah. No wonder we honor Yahweh and, and we worship him because he's a life giver. Y'all follow that? Uh, uh, I need to show you this and I'm done, I'm done. I wanna show you, I'm trying to get you to appreciate, trying to get you to appreciate church, uh, this principle about honor. Honor give you access, honor is the seed to access. I wanna watch this, go to Exodus chapter three, Exodus chapter three, Exodus chapter three. And I want you to meet me at verse number seven and we'll read through ten, seven through ten. Exodus chapter three, verses seven through ten, watch what the Bible says. The Bible says, then the Lord told him, watch this. I have certainly seen the oppression of my people in Egypt. Now understand, they have been slaves for four hundred and fifty years. They have been under the, the cruel hand of Pharaoh. And the Bible says, the Lord told him, I have seen, I've certainly seen the oppression of my people in Egypt. Watch this. I have heard their cries of distress because of their harsh slave droughts. I am aware of their suffering, so I have come down to rescue them from the power of the Egyptians and to lead them out of Egypt into their own fertile, uh, and spacious land, is a land flowing with milk and honey. The land were of the Canaanites, the Hittites, the Amorites, the Prejuices, the Hittites, the Jubilets. Now look, now look, the cry of the people. And Israel has reached me and I have seen the harshly the Egyptians abuse, abused them. Now go, I'm sending you to Pharaoh. You must lead my people, Israel out of Egypt. Don't miss it y'all. So we read the Bible Tuesday, notice what happened. Just notice. God says, I've seen the oppression. God says, I heard their cry. Uh, God says, I'm aware of their suffering. So God says, I'm gonna come down. Y'all got that? Say it one more time preacher, they missed it. God seen it, God heard it. God says, I'm aware of it, so I'm gonna come down, I'm gonna respond to it. Oh, I should have, I should have had a lot of emojis right doing that because when God sees it, when God is, when gods are here you and God is aware of it, God said, I come down. See, here, here's the good thing about God. God seen their pain, God, God was aware of their suffering. God saw the hardship, so God says, I'm gonna respond to it. I'm gonna, is there anybody over here tonight that knows that you've been in some tight spots? And God says, that, that I see, I heard you cried out to me, I saw what you was going through, I was aware of it and God says, I'm gonna respond to it, so I'm gonna come down. Have God ever, have God ever came down and fixed some stuff in your life and helped you in your life where you didn't know what you was gonna do and how you was gonna do it? But God certainly, he's seen your pain, showed up in your life and he says, I'm gonna come down and I'll fix it. But here's what, here, here's the thing, here's, don't y'all miss it tonight? This the real shout. He says, watch what he said, I've seen the oppression. I heard the cry, I'm aware of the suffering, I'm gonna come down. But I want you to watch the latter part. Watch what he tells Moses. Now go, I'm sending you to Pharaoh. Wait a minute God, you said you was coming down. So how did I get a part of your plan? If you say you was coming down, why you using me? My name is Moses and I have been, uh, away from Egypt for forty years. And I'm on, and right now, I'm eighty years old. And now you, you making me a part of the plan? God said, yes ma'am and yes sir, you know why? Because when God show up, he don't always look like God. God says, I'm showing up, but the way I'm showing up, I'm showing up through Moses. And if you, if the, if the Israelites, if you get so caught up of trying to look for me in a certain box, you gonna miss me when I actually came through Moses. And Moses is the one that's gonna lead you. And although he's a start, although he's starter, although he's old, I'm gonna use, he's a fugitive, he ain't perfect, he a murderer, but I'm gonna use an imperfect man to perfect you, to be what God needs you to be. He says, I'm gonna show up, but I'm gonna come through Moses. God, ask you a question. Tonight, you've been, you prayed to, to God about some stuff some weeks ago. And probably tonight God already showed up. But he's probably showed up through Bill, but you don't like Bill. He probably showed up through Sarah, but you got an attitude with Sarah. He probably showed up through Sam and amen, and you say, I don't like, well, I don't like how he dressed. And, and God says, I showed up, but you don't even know that I used them to show up to be the answer to your prayer. Stop saying you don't need them tonight, you need somebody. I need you to know tonight, your detox tonight says, God, I've been keeping the wrong folk out. It's interesting, we keep the wrong folk out. But for the, the, keep the right folks, we, we settle up, bring the, put the right folks in, we put the wrong folks in. And God said tonight, but I want my people to know that your access, honor is to see the access. You need somebody. You need, and I want us to practice tonight honoring each other. Gotta practice tonight that when we're talking and we're speaking, we gotta honor each other. Man, I always agree with you, man, I always see eye to eye with you, but I gotta honor you. Because I never know what you have, that may be my blessing, that may be my breakthrough. And now God is saying to us, honor is the seed to access. Let me show you this and I'm done. Look at, uh, Mark chapter six, Mark chapter six. And I'm read through one through six, Mark chapter six, one through six. Watch what the Bible says. Jesus left and went to his hometown, accompanied by his disciples. When the Sabbath came, he began to teach in the synagogues and many who heard, uh, him were amazed. Where did this man get these things they asked? What's the willstom that has been given to him? What are the remarkable or miracles he's performing? Watch it, isn't this the carpenter? Isn't this Mary's son and his brother James and Joseph and, 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 and Judas and Simon? Aren't his sisters here with us? And they took offense at him. Jesus said to them, a prophet is not without honor in his own country. Watch this. And the Bible says, among his relatives. And the Bible says, he, he could not do any miracles there except lay hands, watch this, on a few sick people and heal them. He was amazed, amazed at the lack of faith. Wait a minute. Jesus in his own hometown, he healed everybody. He healed people with colds and he healed people with leprosy. He a lot of folk. But there was some folk there, he's, the Bible said, he couldn't perform miracles there. What, what was it, was it God, was it Jesus, was you just off that day? No, it wasn't that, it wasn't, he's still God. He says, I can't perform the miracle because they don't even honor me. They don't even see that I'm the, I'm the resource that they need. They only see me as the carpenter's son, but I'm more than the carpenter's son. They know my sisters, they saw me with my, my, my earthly father Joseph and they saw me with my mama. But, but they didn't really know who I was. And so a lot of miracles I could have performed in their life, I could have did it. But I couldn't do it because of their lack of faith. They didn't realize their honor is to see the access. And tonight, I'mma challenge you, when you go on your job, be careful who you dishonor because you don't like them. Because you never know, God may put something in them that can be the answer to your prayers. Be careful how you are bitter towards your wife and how you are, uh, uh, how you, how you talk to your husband. Because, because truth of the matter is, God may put something in them to help you on your walk with God. And so tonight, we gonna detox. I wanna start adopting mindset, I need you, I need somebody. Watch the pro, I'm go, I'm go over the principles and I'm done. The principle number one, knowledge is the seed of change. Principle two, listening is the seed of learning. Principle number three, God's word is the seed of territory. And fourthly, honor is the seed to access. Listen, don't miss what God has for you because your attitude is to dishonor people. Don't miss it. I, I know we don't preach about that a lot in the church, but something is simply as saying, uh, be saying thank you. Something is simply as saying, saying, I appreciate you honoring people. Because we are the body of Christ. Uh, I pray something will say it tonight that will bless your life in a mighty, mighty way. Uh, at this time, I wanna take any questions that anyone may have. I pray, uh, that, um, that I can answer those questions, best I know how. Any questions tonight, I'll take them at this time. So it's called, do I have any questions?
Looking back through the chat.
Amen, 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 and bless the name of Jesus. I pray, again, something will say it tonight that will bless you. And I give your night back to you tonight. I pray that, uh, we'll see you on Sunday morning as we are excited about the great things God is doing with the Northwest Church as we continue to worship and serve and praise God, uh, together. Uh, I wanna take prayer requests at this time, I wanna take prayer request, I'm asking Brother Newsome to close us out with a word of prayer, uh, tonight. And again, thank all our guests who are visiting with the Northwest Church. Thank you for being with us, us tonight as well. Uh, any, any prayer requests at this time?
In Matthew's chapter eleven and verse number twenty-eight, Jesus says, it's like this, come unto me all ye that I labor and I heavy laden and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn of me, for I'm meek and lowly in heart, and ye shall find rest unto your souls. For my yoke is easy and my burden is light. Can you be honest and say that there are moments, there are times where you are dealing with pain, you are dealing with tragedy, you feeling hopeless, times where you don't wanna be bothered, times where you feel like you don't have it all together?
Somewhere deep down in my heart, I still love you.
And in those moments, in those moments, Jesus will say, come unto me. I am Tridania's beard, I'm the minister evangelist of the Northwest Church of Christ in South Haven, Mississippi. And I want you to join us in a body of teaching for the next twelve weeks as we talk about detox, twelve steps to restoring your hope. Let's be honest, there are moments where we don't have it all together. There are moments where we feel like that nobody really understands us the way we want them to understand us. And in those times, we need God to restore what has been broken. We need him to re, uh, mend our hearts back together. Truth be told, we have to detox from some stuff, detox from people, detox from places and detox from things. So as we begin this body of teaching, I, it is my prayer and my hope that you come with an open mind, an open Bible to say, God, I need to hear a word from the Lord. To say, speak Lord, I will obey. Look forward to it. May God bless you man, bless you real good.